Did I hear right that Ann was going to be here tonight?
Expected her to be. Okay, welcome. Fall to order the planning commission meeting for March 21st, 2022. Ask zoning administrator to call the role, please.
Broker? Crawford?
Here.
Fox?
Here.
Gardner?
Here.
Gaunt?
Here.
And Hereford and Mans are excused. Not sure if we want to give Ann a few more minutes.
We can't. Let's, yeah, I mean, she. I know we ran this by her at the end of the last meeting.
She was going away for the weekend, but she said she would be back today.
Right. I'll give her a whole two minutes. 6:02. I will entertain a motion for approval of tonight's minutes.
Agenda?
The part? I didn't do that. Like I said, for approval of tonight's agenda.
Second.
Moved by Gaunt, seconded by Gardner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from the 17th of March meeting.
Those minutes are not ready yet. We have no minutes for this.
Okay, we'll approve those then at the next, our next get, regular get together. Only been four days or whatever it's been, five days. Okay, moving along. Public comment on agenda items limited to three minutes. Choose to make a comment, please step to the podium, identify yourself, give us your city of residence, and address your comments to me.
Hey, everybody. Hi, Dan Fox.
Hey, Gregory.
Gregory Muncie, 306 Butler Street, Sagatuck, Michigan. A lot of you know me from my work with Sadaba Events in Town, also a previous business owner. I thought I'd give my opinion about the subject of the 5A, today's a special land use and site plans review for 449 Water Street. I just wanted to say that Wicks Park Bar and Grill is a unique longstanding destination for food, drink, and music, open all year long. They add to city events from participating in parades, hosting fundraisers for nonprofits. Of course, their fall pumpkin decorations really add to the whole fall decorations here in town as well. With the citywide success of the extended outdoor dining areas, it seems logical to see, to the outdoor settings welcomed by the city. It seems more logical of the outdoor settings welcomed by the city, especially without having to give up any parking spaces. So it seems logical that you might want to approve that. The concern of excessive noise, I see, is hard to justify based on the existence, existing ordinances for this downtown business district. The corner of water in Mary, for example, is not any different than here water in Culver. The new full-time two-level exterior deck for up to 300 patron will have a more ambient sound levels for the folks that live or have businesses around here than the 40 to 50 patron occupation ground level patio being considered by Wicks Park Bar and Grill. If enforcement of the existing time and noise level ordinances are not being enforced, that issue should be addressed accordingly. Thank you.
Thanks, Gregory.
Yes, from Simon, 428 Butler Street, I started another memo on Saturday. And then I thought, well, I think I've dealt you with enough memos with my immediate concerns. I just hope that this evening you can come to some respectful conclusion for both parties. My concern again is the drainage, the noise, the interruption of my business, which immediately abuts this project. So thank you very much for your consideration.
That's good.
Thanks. Anyone else? All right, we'll move along to old business, special land use and site plan review for 449 Water and 121 Mary Street that was tabled from the February 17th meeting. No, that's not right. It was tabled from the March 23rd meeting. 20, March 17th meeting, sorry. Lot of things getting tabled. I think we ought to probably just go straight to the public hearing format.
I just have a couple of comments and questions that were raised. First of all, do we have, do I have the right to waive submissions? And this is that section that says unless waived by the zoning administrator. So that's possible. Then there was questions about the signage. And I really wasn't sure exactly how the signage got distinguished between internal signage and building identification signage. So I did get this section listed up, and the sign permit procedure is subject to approval by the zoning administrator. If you look down to number six, directional freestanding signs on private property for the direction of tra- of traffic. So be approved as part of an overall site plan by the planning commission. So that's how the distinction was made between signage on the building and signage on the site plan. And since there is no internal traffic on the plan and no streets are planned and no sidewalks are planned. It's not like a dune grass development where there's streets and stop signs and yield signs and no parking signs. And that's really what the planning commission is to address in a site plan. So I just wanted to mention that. And then there was a question about appeals. What happens if the applicant doesn't like the decision of the planning commission? Can it be appealed to the zoning board of appeals? And the answer is no, it goes direct to circuit court. And then I just also included what the planning commission can include as conditions. Just to remind you that you do have the right to put conditions on an approval of either a special land use or a site plan review. And really, it's to the ones that apply in this section are, is number three and number four. Ensure compatibility with adjacent uses of land and promote the use of land in a socially and economically desirable manner. So I just wanted to remind you that those were your, that's where your authority to put conditions comes from. And that's all I have to add. I do have some photos.
Maybe it'd be good to orient us on what exactly we're looking at. I think I know.
Actually, I'm the one that took these photographs on and actually, what I, as I was looking at the application, I wanted to become more familiar. I know some fences have been removed. And was able to look into the property. And I thought I'd take some pictures because in the discussion tonight, it'll give, I think, everybody a sense of where the property is today from as we're looking at the site plan and so forth. So that was the intent.
So this looks like.
That's looking at the space where the proposed outdoor patio, cement will be going.
Okay.
Just another angle at the same time. Right. That's looking at the ends. That's looking along the Maple Woods property line, which is, I believe, that's the net barrier. That's looking in from the public sidewalk. Couple angles of them saying, same spot. Just as we discussed this this evening, I thought it'd be good for everybody to see. I have kids also handy as we begin discussing. Thanks.
Okay. All right, with that, I'm going to declare the public hearing on this application open. And for everyone's edification, including my own. Rather than a free-flowing, wide-open discussion, we're going to stick to the way this is supposed to happen. The order, who talks, and so on. So the, the way the public hearing procedure, which is not created for this meeting, it's all of them operates is first we'll have what I just did, calling the meeting to order. There'll be the summary by the vote, by the zoning administrator. There'll be the opportunity for presentation by the applicant. Public comment follows regarding the application. Same format in terms of identification and coming to the podium. Comments and questions get addressed to the chair. And at this stage, comments and questions are limited to five minutes in length. The comments will be solicited in order of first supporting comments, including the audience adjacent letters, Zoom people. Opposing comments, same sources. And finally, general comments. And then there is a repeat opportunity to make comments in that same order. When, when that is concluded, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing. At which point it goes to commission deliberation, which is done without public comment. And then finally, commission action, which is also done without public comment. I will close the hearing. And the meeting would continue, which then has yet another opportunity for public comment, limited to three minutes toward the end of the meeting. So that's unclear to speak now, but I think it's pretty clear. So you want to, Cindy, I mean, some of this obviously carries forward from the last meeting and some is a little.
Yes, and I think I don't have anything else much to add that I haven't already with the ordinance excerpts. So if you want to go straight to the applicant, that makes sense to me.
Bye.
Hi, can you hear me, Cindy? Is that good? I'm Christine Murphy. I own 449 Water Street, which is also 121 Mary Street. The address of the site plan and parcel that I'm asking for revisions to. I think we've pretty much gone over all the information. The last packet you received Friday afternoon, I think Cindy was kind enough to work on it all day and get it out by four. Thank you, Cindy. I appreciate it greatly. I appreciate you guys having a meeting today on Monday. I know you didn't have to do that. You could have waited another month. So I do greatly appreciate that. So basically, I just want to turn my already existing cottage and backyard into a bar and event space. I think you have all the, the details of it all. You've seen 52 million pictures of it all. For the la- I mean, I think part of the reason is that block Russ's pictures that he shows shows that the house, from the house to that backyard, you were never able to get to that backyard through the house. So fortunately or unfortunately, that piece of land has been quiet for years. Nothing has been happening there. So my renters that rented, there was no fire pit out there. There was no grill out there. It's always just been a quiet, dead area. And it's time for me to utilize that in the heart of Sagatuck. To do it to the community, to do it to the best of the ability, you know, to follow all the laws, all the ordinance, all those things. It's just been so quiet. So I think that it has stirred up some things because now it's not going to be, you know, a quiet little space. So I understand the, the, the opposition about that. It is in a commercial area. I think I, whether people believe me or not, my track record in the community with what I've been doing at Wicks is pretty, following the rules, doing, if the police come by and tell me my music's too loud, definitely following all those rules and that kind of thing. Never had any violations. So I think what I'm requesting to do is something that the community needs. It's a quiet bar, the outdoors for outdoor space. It's, it's really a great space for wedding rehearsals, wedding parties. There's no place to have a big party with 30 people in town. The only place is at Coral Gables. So there are, it's a, it's a need. People are looking. People are getting married here. People are celebrating things here. That's what Sagatuck's about. So I'm just utilizing my current land for something of that nature is what I'm looking to do. I'm not looking to do concerts. I'm not looking to do raves. It's actually, I'm looking to have intimate settings over there. And I know everyone's worried about what would happen after I leave or I sell it or whatever. I mean, crystal balls, we never know what people are going to do after something is sold. So I just want to know what, you know, clear about what my intention is there and what I'm bringing to the community in the commercial area that I am currently in. So I guess that's about, I mean, the, I think the fence, the lighting, the sign, I think we've covered all of the dotted the i's and the t's and everything for you all, but we're happy to answer any other questions that you may have about it. Okay?
Thanks, Christine.
Thank you.
That puts us into the public comment area. So first, we will call for anyone with supporting comments. And we'll move to anyone with opposing comments.
Simon, 428 Butler. I just want to take two of Christine's statements. She indicated there's no noise there now. There will be noise. And there's no place in town for big intimate parties, which in itself is a contradiction, but that's my concern, big intimate parties. Thank you.
Point 447 Butler Street, this property will be in my front yard. We've gone from a speakeasy with 20 to 25 people in it to an establishment for 129 people. And from quiet, 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 now it's going to be noisy. I'd like to remind the commission that Christine already has sidewalk seating for 21. She has a pop-up patio that will seat 63, and I did use Pat's map for that. So that will seat 63. She has three picnic tables on Mary Street that would seat 18. She has a dining room that in, does indoor dining that seats 75. She has 54 bar seats, which equals 231. And if you give her what she's asking for tonight, that makes 360 seats that she has on that corner. There are parts of, of the ordinance that talk about harmonious use and density. That's pretty dense for that corner of the world. And if you're not going to look at what's supposed to be done in those areas and the harmonious development of the area, then it's not worth, the ordinances aren't worth the paper they're written on. If you're wasting your time rewriting the track to the plan. Nobody's going to read it or follow it. So thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Anyone else with an opposing comment? Seeing none, opportunity for general comments. I'm never sure exactly what they mean by general comments, but there's an opportunity for them if you think you have one. And now there is a repeat opportunity to go through what we just went through, and you're welcome for supporting comments.
Hi, Christine, 449 Water Street. Once again, Catherine has a swimming pool right there. So her guests are loud. I hear her guests. The IVN hosts parties all the time. That's not even a B and B anymore. It's an Airbnb. Everyone has access to that driveway and stuff. It's always loud. So I guess the judgment of loud and big and what's going to happen is, is very, you know, discretionary to the person that enjoys those things or don't enjoy those things. I can have a party out there tonight with as many people as I want. I can give out alcohol and have a party out there. I own that land. Just so my noise and everything is done by 11 o'clock. So I, I guess, like, what I'm asking for is not even something that I can't do right now in a sense of just a business matter. I own the house. I own that yard. I can have, my renters could have a party out there. They could have a fire pit. They could grill out there. So the whole, and I have to follow the noise ordinance of 11 o'clock, just like I, every bar does in town. And to be honest, most bars follow it. We are actually a pretty good community about following the MLCC laws and the laws here. The patrons sometimes aren't, but the business owners take it very seriously when it comes to things like this. So this isn't something that I've thought of, you know, off the cuff, that I just want to have some more seats, that I just want to do this or that, or throw caution to the wind. It's a business. I'm running it like a business. And so I've put a lot of thought into it, and it is what the community needs of a space for wedding rehearsals. A space for people to have, you know, intimate parties at, a quiet place inside to go have a drink at. So I mean, it's not, I'm not asking for a huge amount of, of a three-story deck or putting condos there for that matter. I mean, there's a lot of space. It's a huge piece of property. I'm not trying to put 300 people in a little small area. It's a large piece of property. So thank you.
Any other supporting comments on the second chance? Any other, go ahead, please.
My name's Randall Strong. I am not the citizen, resident of Sagatuck.
That's all right.
On the outskirts, but I am the builder involved in this property. And I would like to say that not only is this going to help the community, it would actually help the bed and breakfasts if there is an event, especially in the winter, in the fall, where there's not a lot of people. They're going to want a place nice and close to where they are so they can walk to it. There's three nice bed and breakfasts right there next to the Wicks. Wickwood, Maplewood, and the Sagatuck Inn, which would actually benefit greatly, I think, in the fall/winter times when they're already booked. Obviously, probably pretty much through the summer, spring. There's that fall and wintertime that would really be beneficial, maybe bring some of that business they're hoping to get in that time where people want to come from Chicago, Detroit, some of my clientele for those small gatherings, and it's right there. So that's just a little snippet of what I have to think about it.
Thank you. Any additional supporting comments? Second go around. Any opposing comments? Second go around?
Simon, 428 Butler. I personally don't like the tenor of this whole field. But I just want to let the committee know that in 32 years, I have never had a police officer when we had our own police department or a sheriff or a phone call about noise from my pool. If 100 people use that darn pool the whole summer for what I pay for it, that's a lot. And it's usually older people who are out there with a cup and a glass of wine and sit in the gazebo, and the pool is basically something put their feet in. The loudest it ever gets is twice in the summer when my own kids are there. And other than that, that pool is not really used. So that's kind of a bogus claim. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Any other opposing comments that can go around? Any general comments at all? Okay. With that, the public comment portion of the hearing is closed. Which takes us to F, if you're following along on your sheets. I should mention, there are a fair number of letters in support and in opposition that are, will be part of. I don't think we need to.
I have two new letters, both from the same party. And you should have copies on your desk.
We, we haven't read every other letter. They're able to be.
Get under advisement and.
I mean, I'm open to suggestions if you guys, anyone wants.
Yeah, because I know we also, I don't know how it works, but I, I know we have the letter from Catherine that she handed out physically at the last meeting. Does that need to be? I don't, I don't know how the record works, but I just mentioned that as one that.
Well, it's, all of it's part of the record.
Yeah.
Where the question is whether we need to read it.
Right.
And audibly make it part of the record. My hope is sort of not, but.
You don't have to read them into the record.
I mean, I defer to Russ or Richard, any of y'all have views on that or contrary views on that. Make them known. There's no hard and fast on this.
Well, I guess my question is just if they're not part of the packet, which they're, they're not all, do we need to delineate them in the minutes? Do we need to list them somewhere for the record?
They'll be listed and attached.
Enough or not?
Yeah, oh, yeah. They're, yeah, I just, I know they're not attached to the packets.
Right. If they come in after I get the packet ready, they don't get attached to the packet because I have to put that out. But they can submit written comments up to four o'clock the day of the public hearing.
Chairman, the only question I would have is Mr. Medler goes to quite great lengths to quote our ordinance in much detail. And I know sometimes his zoning administrator will counter that with corrections or affirmations of the, of the comments made in the letters. And there's a number of them in both letters. I, I just don't know from a experience standpoint if that's something we should look at, if it's something whether we just, part of the record, which is what, kind of where we are right now. I just, I just put that out there because he is very specific in most of his communications.
Yes, he is. I did go over last time about the. I did go over last time about the non-conforming use issue and did provide you with a handout supporting material. There is no distinction in our zoning ordinance between outdoor seating and an event space. There's no definition of event space. There's no description of that. It's just something that every restaurant may have an event. I think that occasionally bodies will get events that they have. They make, people make reservations and reserve it and have a birthday. I know I was at a restaurant at Wally's one day, and next to the quiet table that we had was a birthday party and immediately turned our discussion into something that was unworkable. But, so there is no distinction, what is an event space? There could be some conditions that would affect an event space. An event space that could be, we want a written contract between the event persons and Wicks. That might be something that you could consider, like, and it might have in the written contract, what's the time that you have to be done? And what's the music situation? And how many seats are there going to have? So there's things that you can do with your condition. I took a bunch of notes this morning, so when you get to the part where you might be applying conditions, I'd be happy to talk about any of those notes that I made this morning. The live music that can be addressed, outdoor speakers that can be addressed, the exterior lighting, I did put on your desk a drawing of the exterior lighting that will be installed on the fence, similar to what's in the photograph. I don't see anything in our zoning ordinance about X. What does it say, soundproof absorption materials? That's something that you can address in your conditions. Site drainage, we always take that to the city engineer. And if it doesn't, if the water doesn't drain the way it's supposed to, then get out your jackhammer and take it up and do it again until you get it right. Extension, he's calling it new establishment. It's not a new establishment. It's an existing establishment that's being made bigger. I believe, if I'm wrong, just let me know, Christine, but it's all under the same liquor license. You're not getting another liquor license. It's just all one, one establishment, it's just bigger. So it's not an accessory use, because it's not subservient to the rest of the use. Q and ninety-two O and P talk about new establishments, and it's not a new establishment, and it's not a new liquor license. Negative secondary effects due to pedestrian traffic during late night hours, noise, odors, and lights emanating beyond the site's boundaries. Yes, the section that he notes, ninety-two P six, it's not a new establishment, so that section does not apply. And the city staff used waived a lot in the memorandum, and I did kind of talk about that a few minutes ago, what the ordinance authorizes. The other letter, proposal did not involve a change of use because the uses before and after were both conforming, and the proposal constituted a special land use. That's true. Both the house as a residence and a commercial restaurant are permitted uses in that zone district. We're here because of the special land use permit and because that section also references site plan review. We had two applications, well, we really had three, two applications for the planning commission and one for the historic district commission. No authority existed for a stop order on the work being done on one-twenty-one Mary Street because it was an interior demolition and construction. No zoning permit was required for that because they were doing it at their own risk. They knew that you could say, no, we're not going to let you have, expand your restaurant bar into that building. And they still wanted to do it anyway, because if it's not going to be a bar and grill, it can still be a short-term rental, and it needed to be updated. So there's no problem with that. If any one of you came to me today and said, I want to rip out all my carpeting, I want to remove all the kitchen cabinets and all the kitchen appliances because I might want to do something different, I would give you that permit because you're not changing the use at that point. You're just taking the interior of the building and cleaning it out. I wouldn't promise you that you could do a restaurant, and I wouldn't promise you that you could do a machine shop or anything else that wasn't permitted in that zone district. But they're going through the right channels. The stop work order was put up because the window was removed before the historic district approved the application, so it was not related to the use at all. Does not constitute an accessory structure. We've kind of covered that. It's not an accessory structure. It's not subservient to the rest of the property. An accessory structure is something like a garage. It's part of your house, but you don't live in it. And an accessory structure to a restaurant might be coolers, or it might be a storage building where you keep your chairs and your food. That would be an accessory use, but expanding a restaurant is not an accessory use. So interior alteration, we already went over that. No new building was erected, relocated, or altered in its exterior dimension or its use, because they don't have the permit yet to change the use. They're going through the right process to get that done, and cleaning out a building is not changing the use. They have not established a restaurant in that building without permits. And I must agree somewhat with the section that says the historical district gave its approval. They did not approve the use as a restaurant, nor did they have the authority to. What they do is issue a certificate of appropriateness, finding that the changes meet the guidelines for the historic district. So yes, the historic district approved the certificate of appropriateness, but they did not approve the use. So I could have, I was probably misleading in saying that they approved it. They, what they approved was the fact that they thought it met the guidelines of the historic district and could, I could issue a certificate of appropriateness. Accessories, we kind of covered. I think those are the main code sections that he addresses, so that's my comment to that. And sometimes that happens, if you take something out of context in the ordinance code and you don't know the rest, like the thing with the signs, you don't know the rest, it sounds like it may be a problem. When in actuality, if you know the whole entire ordinance, it's addressed somewhere else.
Also, I want to clarify my request last time about the waivers, which are changed and identified as waivers. And for everybody to be crystal clear, that, that, those waivers are authorized by the ordinance. That's not something that the commission weighs in on, challenges, rules on. That's sole discretion of the zoning administrator. So those are what they are, period. Okay?
Yeah, I just, I want to first say thank Cindy for going through that. Those, those letters are detailed, and I think they.
It's a big help.
Yeah.
I agree.
Thank you.
So we enter the portion listed as F in the public hearing outline where we, as a five-person commission at this point, deliberate on what we think, where this ought to go. We can, there's no requisite order for the way this needs to proceed. What I want to make sure of is that no one leaves anything unsaid or in their, in their heart or whatever, because depending on how it goes forward, conceivably, this will be your last opportunity to comment. You provide your thoughts, and that's what we're paid for, except that I'm not paid. And if you're paid, no, we're not paid for it, but if we were paid, that's what would be paid for. So feel free, in any, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to do a Roberts Rules of Order in terms of recognizing people. We all know each other, and we're all friends, so feel free to either raise your hand or just start talking, and don't talk over anybody else, and let's go from here.
I guess I am happy to kick off with perhaps an introductory question or observation, which is, and I was reminded of it by Cindy, your comment about the lights on the fence, that picture of lights on the fence, which is not in the current packet. I'm looking at the most updated packet, and I know we've had various iterations of the packets. I know we had the last version of the survey up on the screen. There's a different version in the packet I'm looking at. I just wanted to level set, maybe we need to identify what is the site plan? Because I'm a little fuzzy on, on it at this point.
Yeah, I would just add to Anne's comment. One sixty, or probably one fifty-four dot zero six one, item thirteen, exterior lighting showing area of illumination indicating the type of fixture to be used. I know the HDC has given their approval for the, I think it was a couple of external lights, but I think the site plan should include lighting, which I'm assuming is going to have to go back in the new area for the patrons and what that lighting might look like, what the wedge is going to be. Is it on the site plan? Can you show it? Can you put it up for us, please?
This is the fence.
So that's the east elevation, right? That's the east, okay.
And then on the other one, they included in there, they showed the location after all. There's eight gas lights on the perimeter of the home.
So you're going to do the whole natural gas light thing like?
You can't put the gas on them, which that's kind of a trend.
That was the one that was on your desk.
So what's the exact location on the site plan that's been provided?
I'm so sorry, I can't see the.
Oh, yeah. On this one, your packet, if you see, the lights are showing on the elevation.
So what I'm looking at, though, is the actual site plan itself showing the sheet P four. So I'm assuming that these little red marks are the light locations. There's one, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, so that shows no lights at all on the fence.
No.
There's going to be no other lighting or illumination in that backyard for cleaning, for emergency lighting?
Well, of course.
We'll need to know, I'd like to know where that's going to be located.
In the emergency access.
Is that what?
Yeah, and this picture, I mean, I guess I see two lights on there, so, but also this picture isn't in the current packet I'm looking at. So I'm just trying to understand the amalgam of what we're, what's the site plan. I think it's in a previous packet, yeah.
Yeah, and I had a really short amount of time to put the packet together.
No, it's fine, I just want to make sure we're, you know, understand the universe. Maybe we need to lay out the.
And we did get a letter from the fire department on the site plan. They cannot do the exiting and the emergency lighting and the exit signs until they get a drawing from the architect showing the, they have to review a lot more stuff than just the site. They have to do the means of egress. They have to look at the equipment, if there's going to be any equipment, any cooking equipment. They have to rule on that. So there's a lot more things that they have to do for the fire department than what they have to do for you.
Those are the sealed drawings.
Sealed drawings.
Required to the building officer, whatever he's called, and to the fire department, which inevitably will come after this.
Yes.
In time.
And I think it should be a condition of your approval that it will be reviewed and approved by the fire department before construction begins or before construction of the exiting and so on. But they have that on their, their list, and they did submit this letter for the site plan review, which is up on your screen, I hope.
Perhaps we could stay, do you want to stay with the lighting until we've resolved that? Or?
I'm sorry.
I said, do we want to stay with the lighting until we resolve that?
Yeah, we can. I mean, if you want to, I don't know, we could, in the case of the lighting and in terms of the site, what's site plan and what isn't. These submissions are part of the site plan. It's not just a single drawing or even a group of drawings. So the location of the lights on the exterior of the building shown on the schematic is part of the site plan. The character of, the actual character of the lights is shown here and is submitted here, even as an individual piece of paper, are part of the site plan. The site plan includes all of those submissions that are relevant. So I guess, I don't know.
I think it would be very extremely rare and unusual to have everything on one sheet of paper. That would just, that would be so cluttered you couldn't read it. So that's why there's additional information. It's very common to say, and here's what our lights are going to look like. And this is our concrete. This is our floor plan. They submitted a floor plan, even though they weren't required to do that. And they submitted the calculations for the maximum occupant load, which we talked about last time. Like, we have eighty-nine maximum occupant load in this room. That would not be comfortable. And I think that Christine would have a hard time selling that many seats. It, I think that would be difficult, and it probably would not be a good business decision. But we don't make business decisions. We make conditions that go with the land. We're not approving Christine for any stretch of the imagination. We're approving the land use and how it might be used in the future. Any changes have to come back to the planning commission.
Right.
You don't, you don't just say, oh, well, we're going to do something different. And they just can do something different. They do have to come back to the planning commission if they want any changes. And I think that these lights that are on the fence, we're not part of the packet for the historic district commission either, so those will probably have to go back. But I don't think that's going to be something that does not meet their guidelines, and it could come back as an administrative approval, so.
Well, just to stick with lights for a minute. So my understanding is that one of the reasons that we're talking about lighting is just the ambiance it creates in terms of not only for Wicks, but also for the surrounding properties.
Yes.
And what I see here, as Russ indicated, there are eight lights. These are natural gas lights on the building itself. And they're also indicated on these elevations, correct? And then the other, I don't know how many, I see two lights here on the fence. I don't know if there are more.
Just, you got three sides, you probably two, two of them.
Right, and they're downward focused?
Yes.
Correct? And they're not gas for safety reasons. Okay. Sorry, my mind just.
Yeah, so, so you're talking potentially fourteen fixtures?
Yes.
Before the emergency lighting comes into play?
Correct.
If any emergency lighting comes into play, which. If any emergency lighting comes into play, which not our deal anyway.
Right.
It may be purposeful for the, for the purposes of our deliberations to kind of area of concern by area of concern proceed in that fashion, rather than bouncing around. And, and so if this, I don't mean, I'm not cutting off any discussion on this, but if this exhausts the lighting area, we can move on to another area. There being no shortage.
I'd like to discuss if we could discover a little more basic, the capacity issue or the occupancy issue. There's, that seems to be all over the place here, I think, unless, I might be missing something too. We've got 70, theoretically 77 people outside and 51, 52 people inside. And versus what I've heard verbally is 30, you know, 25 inside and 35 outside, something like that. So there's that, there's that discrepancy. And, and then, you know, as I look at this, you know, I realize this may be just a little more basic drawings, but it looks like there's 44 seats outside and, but yet proposed outdoor capacity, 77 people, 60 seating. Anyways, well, 60 seating and, and then, but anyway, if, I, I see though, partly to answer my question, that they're including employees in some of this too. But that's something to be looked at, especially in terms of noise.
I think, I think occupancy is, is one of, one of the bigger questions and issues here. And as I think I said last time, maybe not formally in the meeting, but afterward at least, no matter what, everybody's not going to be happy with what comes out of this. And in fact, I consider that a measure of how well we've done our job, because if only one party is happy, then we probably screwed up.
Well, part of it's inherent in the situation, you've got, you know, it's, it's a going restaurant bar, and you're trying to expand it into, actually by the signage and everything, it's really acting like a completely new establishment, really. Otherwise you wouldn't have a 54 by 42 inch sign of, or whatever it is. But you're, you're trying to have a, another bar restaurant right there, where you've got neighbors that are, that just chuck a block on, with the neighbors and a swimming pool and a, you know, an inn and another inn. And it's just, and then, you know, in, it's just, it's just a tough, you know, it's just a tough spot to put a bar.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, as the pictures, I didn't really take the pictures in the extent of showing what's around it, but it's definitely a transition. I mean, the, the, the zone speaks to that, right?
Yes.
It's a transition area. I went back to the recording from the applicant back in February and a few comments, changed the house into a quote unquote, very small speakeasy kind of restaurant, maybe fit 20 to 25 people inside. Another comment was, the outdoor backyard area would be used for private events only. That was emphasized in the comments, it would be held for tons of, nothing like I do at Wick's Park currently. So again, I, I think getting into what, what's being discussed here is that the intent, I think, is to make it distinctly different from Wix in feel, look, find tell brats, I don't know, but, and then one of the other comments made was that feels like it's a little bit of an eyesore right now, the alley and the gate currently use our eyesores, make the street a little more cohesive, and then 20 persons speakeasy with event space in the back. Different vibe from Wix.
Yeah, I, I'm personally inclined to put a fair amount of weight on those, on those comments. In part, you know, for a number of reasons. One of which is it speaks the character of a small speakeasy. The repeated use of the term quiet, intimate, take your pick, suggests to me a space that is in keeping with a transitional description. And in my mind at least, and this is subjective, but as described, that sort of functional space doesn't, does not exist in Sagatuck right now. Intimate, quiet, you know, small scale and so forth. So I put a, personally, I speaking as one, I get no more votes than my own. Speaking as, as one person, I put a lot of weight in what we decide is an appropriate occupancy number. And in that respect, this may cause consternation, but I believe the occupancy should be, occupancy number should be one number, not a number for back and front, which is almost inherently unenforceable. People flux and move or whatever. So my view would be that whatever occupancy number we arrive at, it's one number.
You mean back and front?
For the property.
For the entire property?
Yes, one number. Well, not for the.
For the inside and outside of the space.
Yes, for what we're looking at here, the space covered. No, no, that's, that's something else, so.
I, I have a comment about that as well. It will be easy to enforce the number of seats over the number of people who might be working there or who might be standing at the bar. The number of seats to me is the thing that I could go in at 10 o'clock in the morning and see how many seats there are, or anybody else could for that matter. So I would prefer to keep the occupancy that the planning commission rules on to the number of butts in place, the number of places where people could sit. So that would be a lot more easy to deal with.
The number of chairs.
Chairs.
And you would call that an act, what do you?
Call that a seated occupancy.
Okay. So I don't know if we want to put out thoughts on what that number should be at this point, or wait until later to do that. I'd just as soon do it now and stay with our stay on topic kind of thing. So feel free to.
Personally, and, and listening to the neighbors' comments, as well as the applicant's comments from the recording, the number I come up with is a 25 maximum inside and outside seats.
Russ is at 25 each.
No.
Total, total, okay.
Again, based on the applicant's comments and, and just the continued emphasis here on making it an intimate, small, quiet space. And it also speaks to the applicant's comment about having, you know, small events like a wedding, you know, planning party or things like that, which are typically going to be that number. So again, going back, going back to the applicant's comments specifically.
Any argument in favor of higher or lower, or just a view of higher or lower? Doesn't that be an argument?
Just to clarify too, are you thinking seats, Russ?
Just to Cindy's point. Based on the zoning administrators' comments, that would be the number of people that you could seat.
So 25 total inside and outside?
That's what he said.
Is the interior design, remind me, was it designed for stand-up as well as seating?
From the site plan that we have, I can't tell if those are high tops or if those are, yeah. So I count here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, so there's nine there, 1, 2, 3, 4, 8, so actually I'm assuming that's 51, 35 seated, is probably the number here, but I can't tell if that's.
Well, let's work with a number of 25 and not hearing any other.
Yeah, I guess my only thought is that the, based on what I'm seeing, it looks like 25 people could be seated inside. So then I guess the question is, would we, would be comfortable with 25 people seated inside and more people outside? Or would that be too intense a use?
And that increases the occupancy.
Yes, yes, it would, yeah.
I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know. I'm inclined to keep it smaller, honestly, but.
Again, I go back to the applicant's comments from the intent, as, as well as I think hearing some of the same flavor tie in terms of some of the neighbors' concerns, as well as the intended use of the property. As a planning commissioner, I think that from a transitional standpoint, I think, and then some other conditions that can be worked in.
I, I'm thinking that that might be related to the hours of occupancy as well, I mean.
Oh, we'll get to that on, as a separate item too.
Separate item, but they're related, because if we're limiting the occupancy to a certain timeframe, that would make a difference as to how many people you might want in there. If you're during the day, if you're from noon to 2, I don't think noise is an issue other than maybe amplified music. But, so just kind of keep that in the back of your mind as you're thinking about the occupant load. 12 to 2 with no music is going to be a little bit noisy because of just conversation. But at 2 o'clock in the afternoon, do you really care about how many people are in there as opposed to later at night when people are trying to get to sleep?
So are you suggesting that we're, we should be discussing a variable number of occupants?
No.
Based on the time of day?
No, but you should not, I, I don't think that anybody is proposing that it be open till 2 o'clock in the morning. In fact, we limited the butler to their hours of operation and would have a different impact on the surrounding properties depending on when you limited the occupancy to. If you limit it to 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock, it's not going to have the same negative impact that it would at 2 o'clock in the afternoon. So that's, that's what I'm kind of getting at.
Did I not, did I not see something or hear something in the comments that the applicant has said 11 PM would be the?
Yes. That was in the application, I think the 11 PM. I don't think, but that's, that's not required by, that's, that's not required by zoning.
That's a condition that you can impose.
But it's already been suggested by the applicant.
Right.
Yeah, which, which could be that or another number. I mean, it doesn't have to be that. So if you've got a view on that. I mean, I don't view, I mean, any of it.
I, I mean, I, yeah, it seems to me just, it's probably on my own sleep habits that 10 or 11 is, as long as things are quiet by then, other people can go to sleep, is the way I think about it.
10 or 11, you're saying?
No, 11. I, I actually, on a, in the summer, I would say, I, I would be comfortable actually with 11. And that's the noise we're dense anyway.
I think that brings us to the next item, at least in my little shortlist handwritten here. And that's noise, which I think is, is one of the most vexing of, of issues here. And it's, and as we all know, it's difficult to, they use a decibel meter or something in Holland, and so there's, it's very, it's difficult to police and so forth. I, in this particular case, I would again, to Russ's point, go to the, go back to the applicant's initial comments about a guitarist or whatever, that kind of thing. And in my mind, again, a place that just has a single guitar player in a, in an intimate setting and a small number of people setting is, is an enhancement to the city in keeping with the transitional nature of the, of the, of the operation. But in my mind, the way you regulate that or, or, or apply conditions on that is not with decibels, but rather by controlling and limiting the source, which in my mind, for example, would include no amplified, no amplification of music, period. So that, that includes no guitar amplifier and certainly nothing larger than that. I would, I would, I would, I would restrict no outdoor speakers, period. I'd be inclined, I don't know if this is reasonable or not, to, to specifically state no percussion instruments. Anybody who's walked past a car that has had, has rap music going on inside it, you don't hear the music, you hear the percussion and then, and it travels. So I don't think those sorts of restrictions are, would be onerous given the presented character of this operation. I said to somebody earlier today, and this is not, because I, I know you guys, applicant wouldn't do this, but again, these restrictions go with the property. You know, a bomb goes off and all the Irish people in the city are gone. I could very easily see the next person taking, buying that property, wanting to have a rock and roll band up front and a country and western band out back. And I'll make money with both hands, and that clear, that's not something you would do. It's not something I would do, and it would not be something that's in keeping with the transitional zone or sensitivity, social sensitivity to neighbors or any of the kind. So whatever we set for noise, I think it needs to be clear and, and restrictive, honestly.
The other, two other aspects of this, I know the historic district commission discussed a 10-foot high fence, and I think with this noise discussion, I think that the 10-foot fence, I think would be unnecessary.
I think, I tend to agree, even from an aesthetic standpoint, I think it makes the, I think it hurts the looks, looks of the place to have it look like it's sunk somehow behind, you know, where the edge of the roof is below the height of the fence, so.
Now, the fence that was there, that was removed, was that a 6-foot fence? Was that an 8-foot fence? I didn't, I didn't.
Say again?
The fence that was there that's been removed, if you show the picture.
8 foot?
Was it 8 foot?
We, we come up with, we were trying to match that fence right there. It's actually 9 foot 3 to the top of her fence, so we're trying to keep it consistency. With that going around, that was where we were going with the store district, and they liked the idea of it being consistent. So it's actually 9 foot 3 from ground to top of her fence.
But you can see, you can see how it's higher than the eve of the house.
Yeah.
And that fence on the left is a, basically a backyard fence. There's no street-facing aspect of that that I know of, unless it's behind the post office parking lot.
Catherine, that's, that's around your, around your pool, right?
Yes, that's around the pool, so the fence itself on the floor and the deck is 6 foot. But that bottom line, because Don Mitchell put a sunken wall in. And yet, at the same time, I don't know, there must be some with the post office ground difference, because it is even with the exit of my building. In other words, the doors.
Can you talk into the microphone, please?
Oh.
Of course Cindy has to transcribe much of this.
Cindy just told me I have to speak up, can we believe that?
You see where the break is, the bottom part of that covers the pool installation, all right? Where the bottom of the second or the top fence is, is two steps difference from the level of the floor in the hotel, which is also level with the street, except for one step at the front, and level with the post office next door. And my parking lot drops down from the level of the street or the back of the post office. Do you notice? And that drops down too. So there must have been some different elevations at one time.
Like I said, I have the aesthetic issue which could be resolved by having the 8-foot fence, because the fence goes down this line and then across in front and whatever. The rest of it could be 8 feet and do whatever you need to do. because the fence goes down this line and then across in front and whatever, the rest of it could be eight feet and do whatever you need to do in the back. But I also have an issue. I also have the issue that in thinking, anyone's thinking that the fence is a defense for more sound. I, I don't, I don't buy that. Sound reverberates, it goes over fences, it goes through trees, yeah, maybe you can mitigate it somewhat. But sound is sound, so I'd, to me, I'm going to violate my own rule, going back to the noise thing. The sound issue needs to be addressed at the potential source of the sound, not what happens to it after it's created.
The other question I had was in regards to the actual outdoor seating itself. We have inclement weather, and if it's raining and you have people sitting outside, I would like to see us probably have some, some condition in here that would not allow temporary covers or permanent covers put over the seating. In other words, some kind of temporary roof over that area.
You don't want to see that, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Yes. Was that stipulated anywhere?
No, I just, as I was looking at the property yesterday, I was thinking, it's a beautiful spot to sit. But when it rains, that's going to put everybody into a, where do I go?
Right.
And then it would be a natural thing if you didn't have a condition to just, it's happening.
Oh, I know. I thought, I thought I missed it somewhere.
Well, and I would think some kind of, I know the code allows for changes to come back to us if there was a desire for a covering at a future date. That strikes me as something that would be major enough to come back to us and not minor enough that, that it would just go through Cindy.
I have a question as I'm listening. A lot of places have in their outdoor seating area, whether it's on private property or in the driveway, they have umbrellas. And I guess I would distinguish between umbrellas from what I'm hearing, I'm not sure if.
The city has a requirement on them.
For shade.
They've got a require, they've got particular requirements on those umbrellas. No advertising and all this sort of thing.
But I was thinking a situation like this, they'd probably be allowed to have a type of seating that would allow us umbrella for that.
So you needed, if you're going to put a condition, you need to distinguish between umbrellas and overall roofing or whatever language makes sense.
Yeah, that's just a question, so we appreciate that.
Anything else? I have, I've been keeping kind of a running list of the, of the potential conditions laid out so far that would include by my list, the fire department and building department approvals of the sealed drawings. I don't know if the quote-unquote city engineer, I didn't even know we had a city engineer, but that the quote-unquote city engineer's approval of the concrete and drainage, that that be called out specifically.
In, if I might, if in regards to the fire, I'm still a little concerned about that. From what I gather, the fire department has looked at this and said that there's enough accessibility. But I guess I would draw a distinction between accessibility of fire equipment and the ease of, or the ability to rapidly get out of there.
Right, and they would look at that and after they see the sealed plans.
They look, they only look at that later.
That's when they look at it.
Because, I mean, we've got all this screening, we've got all the six-foot, eight-foot, whatever it's going to be fencing. And it's, it's just going to be everywhere. And there's only a couple of little points here that people can get out and it's, that's a concern of mine, just I, you know, I'm trying to, I'm not a fire person, but you know, I've heard of LP gas tanks exploding, for instance. I mean, there, you know, you would think some fires would be kind of slow, but it might not be slow and it might be a panic and you might have a disaster there. And then, and then you'd go, well, how did we, why didn't we think of that?
They, it is on their list. The, the, the exit, in particular, exit accessibility from the patio area, which right now shows a gate opening into the patio area, which I know is not going to fly, the gate.
So Cindy, Cindy, can you pull up the picture that I took that shows the property itself? Yeah, the one that's on the other side of the side of the building. Yeah, so what I'm seeing on the elevation that's been provided is that there's going to be a gate which will go right out into that space.
The gate I was referring to is in the south wall. The south fence, which is shown as an in-opening gate. Right here. This gate.
Here, Russ.
Right at the 68, that gate right there.
Yeah, we put one in the back corner.
That would be, they're supposed to be all up. That's where it is. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right, so it'd be right here.
No. Right there.
And then.
Gate I'm referring to is right there, that one.
The fire department has just to put one there. And then there's the other exit going out that way.
And that one needs to open out, is all my point, as in it's shown as opening in, correct?
Of course, realizing that what's there now may not be there 20 years from now, you know, I'm thinking they, you know, in the picture that you showed, there's that nice wide driveway there. Now, that may not always be there. Well, then the, whoever owns that was going to, that's going to impede the neighboring property owner from developing that in the future because if, if it's got to be kept, if that's what. Oh, right, yeah.
That is always going to be concrete easily exited and, you know, provided though.
Right. Well, all these people have four, five feet to get out of.
Yeah, so the three exits, you're out, you are outside.
Well, now what, that back one.
Correct, right, that's what I'm trying to point out here, is that this space between two buildings, that belongs to the idea first.
Yes.
So your lot, your lot of tenants are there, so that space where there's, you've got stuff going there right now, that's not going to be the aggressor, correct?
Where are the aggressors? Okay, I see one aggressor so far.
And then the alley, yeah, there's one aggressor, Rich, then there's a two-go south district, very few.
Right. Right.
The importance of that one to the alley is that the likelihood of a fire is in either the back of the restaurant or, or the new, quote-unquote, new building, which means going out the side alongside the building is, if there's smoke pouring out of there or whatever, isn't going to happen, so that, again, this is not our area, but I'm on the fireboard, so I'll not shut up. The way you, when panic takes over, you run away from that, and that means out through that south wall, so that's what makes that exit so important. Okay, I'm going through my list here. So in addition to whatever we, condition, condition we would pose for lighting, if any, the occupancy number specified would be a condition. The noise specifics, which would be specified as a condition, the hours, just as we did for, well, for Butler and for, I was going to say for Retroboats, we did the same thing there, same hours. Read my own writing. Oh, the, whatever condition, however we would word it, related to no broad tent-type enclosures or whatever.
Cover's over.
Umbrellas are acceptable, kind of two things. And as I said, the other approvals from the fire department, building department, city engineer. I think that's it, unless I've missed something.
Would there be any, the only other thing that, and I agree with all those potential conditions, the one thing that I thought about was, that's a pretty tight space back there, and I wondered if the county health department would have any concern with issues with having people that close to what's essentially the kitchen entrance, storage of.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
I'm sorry, being that close to the kitchen entrance, storage of refuse, things of that nature, I don't, I don't know if that's even.
Well, health department should be on this list as well.
I've already met with them, I've met with them. They need site plans and everything like that, it will be separate food license over there, it's going to be cutting fruit and things like that. So it'll be separate, so it will just, so it will, they'll get the site plan, they'll get where the emergency exits are, they'll get all that. I've already met with her about, and she's, she's on board with the site plan as it currently is.
Well, and the condition that'd be put on this is us having that in writing.
That's fine.
From them, not from you, not from the applicant, from, just like fire department. Rich, anything else?
No, thank you.
Are we talking about the conditions still?
Absolutely, we are.
Because one, one, this is really more a question that goes to, it may tie into conditions, so I'll raise it now, but it goes to what Russ was saying, just when we're thinking about the special land use and the standards. Our, I mean, I think we're thinking about this as a restaurant expansion, so I'm thinking more about the land and less about, you know, what the current owner is doing, and just thinking about this, you know, with different owners. I take it we are, we, does everyone agree we would be approving the patio as a restaurant use? Maybe a future owner would use it for restaurant space, not for event space. But is, is everyone agree with that? Because if not, I think we probably need to figure that out, maybe as conditions.
The, if I understand what you're asking, the actual zoning permits the use of restaurants, there's several permitted uses, special land uses within there. Events are not mentioned as a specific land use. So I guess from my perspective, whatever conditions we put on in terms of seating really is the, so if they choose to use it for seating for eating, or if they choose to use it for seating for an event, doesn't really, as long as it's one of the limited uses, it's not a, you know, massage, whatever, something that's not in the limited usage. Sorry, I didn't, just first thing came to mind, that it would be okay, as long as you don't exceed or violate the conditions that we set.
Okay, no, I'm fine with that, I just wanted to be sure I was clear on what we were, how we were thinking about that use. So it's a restaurant, it's just a particular owner may use it only for events, probably.
I think getting people 30 years from now to abide by all these different nuances might be difficult.
Well, the challenge, I mean, whatever gets decided if approved, the hedge against that, and I, is this stuff's going on the deed.
Right.
So if you buy this, you know, something happens to all the Irish.
There'd be arguments, there would be, you know, arguments made down, you know, that that would be beneficial to the community to exceed, you know, to modify those at some point.
Well, and that, we deal with that as a, that's, that's the water we swim in.
Right.
This, this could be changed, anything we do could be changed 30 years from now, 20 years from now, who knows?
Yes, the condition, the conditions shall be recorded in the record of the special land use permit and not be changed except by mutual consent of the planning commission and the owner, so. Yes, we could record these with the register of deeds. Somebody who buys it might not do a good job of their due diligence and not go to the register of deeds and get title work done, but that's on them then. And actually, there's a section of the ordinance that says if you violate your conditions, the special land use approval may be withdrawn by the zoning administrator. Didn't copy it here, but there.
See how they like that waiver.
As we've been discussing this, we really only have two alternatives. We have a, we don't grant the special land use permit, done, we adjourn, we're done. Or, as we're discussing this evening, is finding a way in which we can try to find a middle ground between, and I'm very sensitive, some of the things have been brought up regarding the noise, and that transitional zone itself, as a planning commissioner, I, I, I try to say as true as I can to that, to honor the intent of the people that wrote this. So I don't know if saying no to the special land use is probably the best approach, so where, where's the middle ground, and that's some of the conditions we've been discussing about, I think are not going to make everybody happy, no one's going to walk out of this happy, but I think it's a reasonable approach to what we're being asked to do. We have an application, we have to respond to it. The other thing that I would suggest is, once we get this all down on paper, on provision, is that we get a site plan, we all sign it, including the applicant, zoning administrator, put your signature on it. Including the hours, sitting up, I can see even though I'm not going to be in the deed, I think that'll add a little bit of, I'm willing to sign off us and say, look, this is what we came up with, and we have all agreed to it.
Yeah, I agree. We used to do that for a lot of the condos.
It's required on a PUD.
Yeah, PUD, it's required.
Yeah.
I think it's just a good basic practice, yeah.
I do too, and it sets, it sets a precedent that I think is an important precedent.
Right. Have we concluded discussion of potential conditions? Does anyone have anything else they want to put down, put up for discussion?
The only thing I would come back to is the fence.
Yeah, I, fence was one of mine.
Right, but in terms of what we're looking at, six or eight?
Oh, six or eight.
It was previously.
Eight or 10.
Eight or 10 is what I thought we were, yeah.
That one was six foot, between the idea and that. The parking lot was six foot. The like, there's two sections between the corner of that building, that was six foot, and then it jumped up to nine foot three, the first, went to the back, and then dropped out, and it was eight foot going across that south side. And there is not one currently between the yard and the restaurant itself, which would be higher, you know, the visual of the restaurant.
And that fence we're looking at is the last thing I was going to be moved, is that correct?
That will be reworked and there'll be a new fence that's six foot high.
Okay.
And going towards that, like the visual pictures. Maxed the back.
Yeah, what's to be done with the garbage? I mean, is there a better way to handle it?
No, it's, there's, one of the pictures that was there, there is a gate, but it doesn't work well, it goes to the blacktop and everything's just crumbling below it, so we are replacing all the concrete so that it moves nicely, it covers up. Yeah, right there, that'll actually go all the way to that six-foot fence and cover. So you won't actually see it, but right now it doesn't work well because the blacktop is just crumbling below it, so it doesn't actually work well.
So that gate be closed during hours and non-operation? And it's going to be eight feet?
Yes, that's, that's what that is right now, is eight foot, right there.
That can't be eight feet.
No, it's going to be eight feet.
No, that's, that's a sheet of cardboard.
That eve is, the eve on the house is what height then? How far is that from the ground? I wouldn't be able to walk inside that house. I wouldn't be able to walk inside that house.
Well, I would.
That'd be about the middle of that.
Well, I, again, this is, maybe this is in our area, or maybe it's Historics area or whatever. I'd certainly like to see that out-facing fencing is all of the same height.
I think that's what.
And I, and that that height not be 10 feet, because. And I, and that that height not be ten feet, because that's what gives it this sunken kind of feel. And I don't think, Ed, I don't think those two feet buy you anything.
No, that tends, I think we agreed that tends, although it was a noble idea, it's, that's probably out, so then either eight or six, I guess. At least I think that's where I'm hearing.
What, so?
So it sounds like eight.
So eight fencing is eight-foot fencing, which will, in the case of the adjacent fence to Catherine's, leave an exposure of Catherine's above this fence, but it's not like. It's not like people are going to be taking view pictures back, you know?
So eight feet it is?
Uh?
Eight feet it is. First decision.
Just for, just a quick question on that, how tall is the fence on the left? Is that eight feet or is it?
That's.
Six? Okay.
So we thought we were doing a big favor by boosting it, but maybe we're maybe six even, I don't know.
I still can't believe that the fence on the, on the gate is, is eight feet tall.
It was certainly taller than that, but I'll.
Well, to me, that still results in that, whatever height that is, results in the sunken look, I'm just think, I mean, it's a. Yeah, but just drawing a line straight across to the building, it looks like it's two feet above the, above the eve.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, Dan, I.
And that's, that's what, I mean, you see it here.
Yeah.
You know, I could, to me, may make sense to have that line be even with the eve.
Yeah.
Not that, I mean, this looks like a billboard unfilled up, it's just too big.
Yeah, I.
I'm trying to save you some money here. Yeah, it is.
Well, I think the point that's trying to be made is that with the elevation that you've given us, that it would look better to have it at the eve. Because then it's going to look less like a billboard.
That's all existing that ties into Wicks, so that is there right?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, yeah, I can see that.
That's where we're just, a gate, a gate is actually that large, the metal frame is. I want to say it's eight foot, I mean, I can measure, but I want to say it's eight foot, the cameras, you might throw a little bit, but. That that runs all the way across to Wicks.
I get it, but to me, the elevation is more important to this new. What it does relative to this, the the house than it is to relative to what it does to Wicks. Given, I mean, that's Wicks's back basically corner.
One thing I forgot to mention was much about the township fire district um points, it was once a, one thing about the um gas meter, about having to put.
It's part, that's part of the review, would be part of that review.
Where's the gas meter for it? Okay. Yeah, the way that the letter was written, though, they weren't there. Yeah, guard post, yeah. This is one meter for the entire property. So the house doesn't want, it's not only your electric, gas?
Yes, it is. Electric and gas. But there'll be appropriate metal posts in front, porch.
So the meter for the house is in the front?
Uh, it's on the side, in the alley as well as the 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 restaurant's meter. So we go inside that trash area.
Again, that becomes part of the conditional approval by the fire department. Anything else?
So did we make a decision?
Well, I'm based, I'm based on what Russ said, if there's no disagreement, it sounds to me like can entertain a motion to approve with conditions. And then we can do our best to set forth those conditions for the record tonight. And then chisel them out of legal language or whatever, at whatever reasonable amount of time exists, so that we don't goof it up. But I don't think we, I don't think we can get it verbatim tonight, uh as to, as to specific. Uh, we can get the substance of the conditions, but I don't think we can get the wording of the conditions perfectly, so.
We can get it really close.
Okay.
We can get it very close, and I'm, once again, ask everybody to speak into their microphone, because while I'm taking notes. I would rather be able to go back and listen to the recording to get the verbatim of what you actually said. And you made, what conditions did you make? I have on my list, the sounds, no amplified music, no percussion instruments, no outdoor speakers. Occupancy, I don't know that there's a final number yet. Written contracts for events. The lighting we went over quite in detail. Drainage will be approved by the city engineer, and yes, we have a city engineer. And if it doesn't drain properly, then you get out your jackhammer and start over. The fire department approval, the hours of operation, and the he- health department approval. Those are all things that I could pretty much figure out how to put in a document. And then I would circulate that for your signatures.
Also got the roof, outdoor temporary roof.
Temporary roof, did not get that one, I ordered on this paper.
And hours, I don't, I don't know if you said hours.
Hours of, hours of occupancy, yep.
Hours of operation or occupancy?
Occupancy, because some people might argue that especially that is not an operation. It's an event, so I would say hours of occupancy.
And there was the discussion related to lighting, whether that comes back to us, or do you take another look? I don't know what, I kept, it's on my notes, since I can't.
Note that I'll probably have to take it back to historic district, because it was not on the application to historic district. That might be an administrative approval, or it might be a full commission meeting.
And the fence.
The fence, yes, any change, no matter how small, the historic district has to go back to.
But we capture the fence in our.
What you think it should be, and then back to historic district for a certificate of appropriateness.
Anybody have anything they want to add, subtract, multiply, divide?
I I don't have any more conditions, but I did have a question about the the plan. That probably doesn't bear on anything, but um I I wasn't clear on what, there was new construction, the three parts of new construction.
Yes, there's three parts that are new construction. One is a small addition to accommodate an additional bathroom. The other two parts are a roof over. They're shown here marked in orange.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I just, I saw them and just wasn't sure what they represented.
The two of them are roof overs, and the one in the middle is a small addition to accommodate a second bathroom.
Okay.
Because they have to be barrier-free bathroom. And that will all be, all the barrier-free stuff will be reviewed and approved by the building department in accordance with the Michigan Building Code.
Okay, and the possible bar mentioned in the occupancy document then is not, that's just would, a possible later addition. Come back to us. Well, there was a possible bar mentioned on the possible service bar. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing it, I don't think I am. It sounds like that's maybe just a later, m- maybe something that would be considered later as a change to the site plan.
Yes. That will be the date. Yes.
Yeah, the service bar was mentioned for outdoors on the occupancy document. I just want to be sure I wasn't missing it somewhere on here.
So is it not, is it not?
Please.
Like a mobile bar, when you have an event center, the event in the back, so you're not having to go inside, just have like basically a little. You know, just a little portable bar, like four foot, six foot wide, just with some drinks there, they can serve the people at the event. It's usually like an open bar type of thing, so that's, I'm assuming what was that was referencing, but there is no permanent structure going.
It wasn't going to be plumbed or wired or just be a.
So that'd be a dry bar technically.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else, Rich?
What was the occupancy again that we were, was it twenty-five total?
That was the number that's on.
Inside and outside.
Correct.
But not delineated, not between the two, not distinguished?
Again, going back to the comments that were made by the applicant at the February meeting, that was the number that was twenty to twenty-five. Twenty-person speakeasy with event space in the back, quote unquote.
Yeah.
So that to me would be twenty people.
I'm just struggling with the outside still. I'm struggling with the 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 land use, the, you know, the the whole thing with the with the outside, it's.
Yeah. It's a, it's a step up in terms of of intensity of use, there's no, no two ways around it. Um, and the way that I've looked at it, Rich, is is there a way to find a middle ground here that will?
Yeah, I, I.
No, I, but I I I'm not disagreeing with you, it's definitely a different intense use than. As even the applicant has mentioned, it's been a space that's been empty, because even the house itself doesn't have a exit into that space. So even the people that rent it as an Airbnb couldn't use it for. So it's definitely going to be used for something that's not been used before.
Of course, I'll, yeah, I'll say it's not the most desirable Airbnb either, being close to the garbage and the.
I personally, I think a twenty-five maximum occupancy interior and exterior combined. Based on the applicant's comments, and I think the intended vibe of the place means it's reasonable.
I'm inclined to agree. And also, it isn't, we, we don't get to, we don't get to weigh in on on your business plan, that's not.
No.
I've sat in one of these where I was absolutely convinced the individual restaurant was going to go down in flames, but it didn't violate anything, the site plan review was passed. Year later, the restaurant was out of business because of business.
Well, you just didn't eat enough.
I was there twice. More than probably.
When we're talking about maximum twenty-five, we're talking about, or um, seats.
Yeah. So that means that staff won't count towards the.
Um, I guess my thought, I'll just share my thought, which is I would probably be more, I would probably be, I'm comfortable with that, I'd probably be comfortable with a larger number, given that there's an indoor and outdoor space, but um, but if that's what the consensus is, I'm, I'm fine with that. I guess the thought is that I would think that the landowner could always come back for an amendment on that point at a later date. Uh, requesting perhaps not, not obtaining it, but, you know, depending on how the use plays out. I would think that would be something they could come back on.
If, if the, I think part of the motivation on that number, there are a lot of things tied together here. The whole transition issue, the closeness to the various B and Bs. And as a result, the noise and numbers and noise probably move in a parallel path. So these things are all tied together.
Of course, we're not saying occupancy, we're saying seats, uh, and I mean, they could. If if it was me and I'm trying to get around it a bit, I'd probably maybe bring some little foldable seats or temporary seats or, you know, but that's kind of beyond our control, and I, you know, I.
Yeah, I I I applaud your attempts to make this into something that's, that can work.
Again, uh, my thought process on this has been, um, the elevations that have been presented, um, I think represent a quality, a quality project. Based on some of the things that have been shared this evening as well, some of the elevations, I think there's a, an honest attempt to make this a very nice place. Two is going back again to the applicant's comments about keeping it very low-key, very quiet, and not impactful to the neighbors. And I think it's incumbent upon me as a planning commissioner to ensure that that special land use complies with that intent. That's, that's where I am on it. And if there's an attempt to go beyond that, at a future point, I'll have to come back to planning commission, or if the owner decides to violate the conditions, and that'll have to be dealt with from an enforcement standpoint. I think we're just trying to, from my perspective, as planning commissioner, trying to balance all the needs here.
With that. We didn't allow comments.
Did you want to reopen the public hearing?
Do I have to do that to listen? I mean, we, he talked about the, he talked about the height of this or that or whatever, so.
And there is a lot of discussion about fire and being fenced in back there. If there's an eight-foot fence, if you stood on a chair, you still couldn't get over the fence if there was a fire. A six-foot fence, if you stood on a chair, you could get over the fence. And I know there's nothing in in the books that says you have to do that, but I think it's much safer. I think that gate in the back is um, is not legal because it goes onto somebody else's property. I've talked to Greg about it, but um, I think a six-foot fence, and there is no other eight-foot fence in the city, except for the one across the river that's, has a lawsuit on it. So I think you're much safer with a six-foot fence, and it's much more cohesive with the neighborhood, and it doesn't block the view shed like an eight-foot fence was. I think an eight-foot fence makes it look like a fortress there, it's just this big fenced-in area. And it doesn't do anything for the noise, it only makes it a echo chamber for noise. So I think it's less noisy with a shorter fence, thank you.
Thanks, Shane.
The fence, quite frankly, isn't designed as a sound barrier, so it's just a fence.
Say it again?
The fence is not designed as a si- sound barrier, it's just a fence.
Well, we were toying with it.
I know, but it doesn't.
I feel, it's only fair if you, because I don't understand, I don't have, I don't have the answer to this question. Is, is there a reason why an eight-foot fence would be preferable to a six-foot fence? That's why I thought, I didn't think it was your deal.
Visual aesthetic inside, because you've got the rest, visual aesthetic, aesthetic inside, because you've got a restaurant here with air conditioners above. So if you can get up to at least an eight-foot fence, when you're sitting, it does block the view from that purpose. And then on the south side of property, next to. I B N, that is an existing eight-foot fence right now, the privacy screen. So it actually helps you with portion, and it's only except that portion stuff, so you prefer a tall fence. For privacy screen, the eight foot is kind of in between where.
I'm mixed, betwixt and between.
Talk into the microphone, please.
I'm betwixt in between on this whole fence.
I don't see anything in the township fire department's mention at all about the fence height.
No, but I mean, no, if they get into that, they'll get into it on.
Right.
Their, their review, their sealed drawings review, and changes will be demanded or whatever they do, I don't know. No, I know you weren't.
No, no, I, but, but.
Okay, debate's over. So I will entertain. a motion for approval based on, or, or for that matter, a motion for disapproval. And if it's a motion for approval, the, that motion will probably require the contributions of multiple committee members to get all of the attached conditions properly listed. So be my guest.
I would make a motion to approve the application with conditions under one five four dot zero eight one, item B. Planning commission may grant special land uses with such conditions and safeguards as are appropriate. One, capacity, two hours of occupancy, three, noise abatement, four would be outdoor seating covers, five would be fencing, and then, um, contingent upon engineering and so it takes township fire department approval.
Yep, and each of, unfortunately, each of those things have to be specific, but I, as the, as the structural basis for the motion, we could go with that, I think.
I will add twenty-five maximum occupancy, again, going back to the applicant's comments, um, original intention for the property, that would be interior and exterior combined, and that's the number of seats for the zoning administrator. That clear it up? Uh, hours of occupancy, I know we've debated, talked about that, but I don't know if we came up with the final number.
Thought we came up to, did we come up to eleven or ten or what?
I'm comfortable with eleven.
And it's eleven.
Okay, with eleven PM. So that would be, though, don't we have to specify hours of occupancy for the day or just for the time that the occupancy ends?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite.
Well, when we say, when I say hours of occupancy, I'm thinking when the door opens, when the door closes.
Yes.
Okay, so we've got occupancy.
Closing at eleven, ending, when does it start?
When does it start?
Would it make sense to do it with the normal business operations? Or? I mean, your speakers don't open until like, right, but.
No, it would be more typical to do eleven AM to eleven PM.
Eleven to eleven. Fair enough by me.
Noise abatement.
Could I just, sorry, I just have one thought, though, on the opening time, just thinking about this as, again, running with the land, not the specific use. If someone wanted to open a, a breakfast place in the future, would we want it? I mean, would we care if it were an earlier time?
They'd come back.
Okay.
Noise abatement.
Restaurants get special use, period.
Yeah.
It's now, yep.
So. Noise abatement.
I'm personally comfortable with limiting, um, outdoor music to no amplification, no outdoor speakers.
No percussion. I don't want to, uh, my, my view is that's, 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 that's a noise that carries. It's a noise that reverberates, and it's annoying, particularly if you can't hear the music, and you only hear the percussion, and it's really annoying. So, and again, in keeping with the comments and, and stipulations or, or, or remarks made by the applicant, I can't imagine, not going to ask, but I can't imagine you on a drum set on that patio or inside, so I don't think that's an onerous condition at all. Would be an onerous condition for Wicks Park.
So my thought on that would be, um, you'd probably, we'd probably want to discuss limiting the number of performers, because, um, you could have a non-amplified band with percussion as opposed to a single guitarist or maybe a piano player or something like that without amplification. So it'd be more, my mind a question of limiting the number of performers, perhaps? I, I.
I don't know, I think we're starting, we're, I think we're, I think we're starting to get a little wacky here.
Right.
Five instruments.
I think the goal.
No barber shop quartets, I guess.
Yeah. I, I, again, getting back to the applicant's original comments as well as comments from the neighbors, our goal here is to make sure that it's not impacting the neighborhood.
Literally keeping people awake. That's, that's the goal. Don't let that happen. And we can all, in, in, in a meeting room, go nod to that and say, we don't want that to happen. Our job is to codify that in a way that
Right.
makes that.
Well, the nearest neighbors are just feet away.
Right.
Across the street.
Almost, it just seems like.
Russ, could you read the conditions again, please?
For the noise?
For the noise.
Noise abatement, no exterior live or amplified music is what I had written earlier, but that may not be as, in keeping with what we're trying to accomplish here.
I would phrase it a little differently. I would, I would, I would say no, I, I wouldn't limit it to inside or outside, but that's just me. But I would say no amplification. So that means even if you have a single guitar player, he cannot be standing, sitting there with his amp alongside of him. No outdoor speakers, that's pretty crystal clear. No percussion, that's pretty crystal clear, I think. And I, to me, those were applied to the, to the application without specificity as to indoors or outdoors.
No amplified music, outdoor speakers, or percussive instruments.
So, sorry, under that scenario, what kind of music would be okay, like?
Like, as was mentioned by the applicant, a single guitar player.
Okay.
You know, like a.
I see, live music that is not amplified.
Twelve-string guitar player, it's more, it's more like, uh, it's not, it's less a performance and more a background kind of music thing.
Piano, yeah.
Piano.
Uh, trouble with piano is it's percussion.
True.
Because I was just thinking, like, even like a, a speaker, is that, we're thinking the music, like a Sonos speaker. We're thinking that would not be okay.
A what kind of speaker?
Like a Sonos, you know, just like a Wi-Fi speaker.
And I could see, rather than splitting hairs, I think it's easier to say no. Then you don't have the issue of, is that, is the little okay, and it would, would become the more than a little, I don't know, I, my.
What's your thought?
I think if the hours are limited and there's no amplification of music, I think music would be, you know, your elevator music might be fine. But you can turn that up too, so.
Yeah, that's what, see, that's my, my worry is that any opens the door for trouble. Now, you can all start out in one place, but somebody in an event says, no, we need more noise, we need more this, we need, I want more of this and that. So if you X it out, you don't have that problem.
Well, there is a limit in the code on the amplification. I don't know if we enforce it, and I don't, frankly, I'm not enough of a musical expert to know what it means. But there, like.
There's a number of amp.
There's a, no sound amplifying equipment shall be operated with an ex, with an act, uh, excess of twenty-five watts of power in the last stage of amplification.
Want to try and police that?
I don't know what that means, but.
Really know what it means either.
But I, but I guess my thought is, you know, to be fair to the applicant, if, if we are going to allow a speakeasy, I, I mean, to require the only, basically the only music you could have is live music, it does seem, I understand not wanting loud music, but I would think it'd be reasonable to allow some kind of music, and I guess even like a, I, I'm not an expert on what an amplification is, but I'm just concerned that we wouldn't want to inadvertently, you know, include like a reasonable speaker with, you know, music playing out of it in lieu of live music.
There is a way that you can kind of define that, that would say, no music so loud that you cannot carry on intimate conversation. And that would be two people talking to each other at a table and not shouting at each other to be heard over the music. And I think that although a little bit subjective, could accommodate, I would want to sit in a restaurant that had background music rather than just hearing pots and pans clanging and dinner forks hitting their plates and.
And other conversations and.
Other conversations, but especially on the inside. On the outside, maybe not so much, but on the inside, I think it would be completely reasonable to have some kind of music that did not interfere with intimate conversation.
Fair enough. Are you still in the business of making this things for us, or will we?
Trying to. And, and, and I guess what I was thinking of in terms of the noise was more on the exterior, not the interior.
Well, I think, I think there are issues in both places, but they are different issues, different limitations do apply. So what Cindy just said makes sense to me.
I, I would still say that on the outside, that amplified music would be and no percussive instruments. That just is going to open up a lot of doors of.
And the inside, you have the, the, the building itself.
Right.
To control the sound. The outside, you got nothing.
Right.
And the fence ain't, ain't much. So.
To be reasonable, I think we should have different standards inside and outside.
It's not unreasonable, sure.
Stereo noise control and interior.
I'm, I mean, I guess you don't, you've guessed by now, I'm just not, I, I, I just don't know that this outside is particularly able to support, uh, la, la, uh, live music, uh, period. What do they say? No, stop, end of, stop, full stop, yeah.
So.
But, but anyway, that's just what I, I, that's what I think, but, uh, I felt that for quite some time, having looked at, you know, some of the standards and whatnot, and, uh, intermediate intensity, and I realize it's, you know, it's in the ordinance, but intermediate intensity and densities of structures and land use. You know? I can certainly, you could certainly argue both sides of it. That's, but, but I, I'm just, I'm just, I've, I've been thinking for some time that this, this isn't a place for outdoor stuff.
From a standpoint of noise.
Yeah. But, you know, I'm just one person and.
Well, we could say that there is going to be no exterior live music, period. And then to the point that the zoning administrator is making about having some kind of ambient limit, you know, small Sonos speaker or whatever, that would be limited by that twenty-five, now twenty-five watts is still pretty loud.
Well, yeah, I don't think, I think that's some antiquated thing. There's, uh, I mean, what little I know, uh, you know, the, the watts isn't, it depends on the efficiency of the speakers and everything else. You can drive something pretty loud with one watt i- if it's the right speaker, but, I mean, my, my technical abilities is about forty years old.
But again, getting back to some of the.
He's young by your standard.
Getting back to some of the neighbor's comments, I don't, I don't think there would be, um, I personally would support no live music in the outdoor space.
Okay, put it in, put it in, uh, the list of things and we'll vote on it. Somebody's got a, wants to die on that particular hill, that's the, that's the opportunity to, to do that.
The interior would be subject to the, um, zoning code.
There's also the, uh, Cindy's point about the, uh, requirement for, uh, contracts with, with, uh, tenants or whatever you call it for the, for the event space, which would then, I mean, you could go on that to, to add informing in, you know, as part of the boilerplate of that as to these, as to the overall issue about noise, which is to let somebody from Chicago know this, this, there's, there's a special attention on this property as to noise. If that's your intent, you're picking the wrong place. And if you come, these requirements are in place, closing hour and so forth and all the rest of it.
Um, outdoor seating cover, no temporary or permanent covers for outdoor seating area.
Except for umbrellas.
Exclusive of umbrellas.
Fencing.
I think it's a tough one. It's, it's.
I, yeah, I appreciate where the, where, where the builder's coming from, you know, he wants some uniform around. I know the historic district commissioner liked that too. The ten-foot, in my opinion, clearly not, in my opinion, not appropriate from a planning standpoint. An eight-foot fence. Oh, other than the safety issue that was brought up, um, that would be more in keeping with what's there and what had been there previously. So.
Fire department.
Yeah.
Safety experts approve that.
I'd still, based on what, based on looking at the drawings or whatever, I would still favor a fence that's the top of which is no higher than the eve of the house for, again, for aesthetic reasons. And yes, it'll be, require a step up when you get to, to the main building, but. Huh? No, if that's, if that's what, if that's what it is, that's what it is. That's, that's.
And maybe we specified that it's, when we're, when we mean eight feet, I, I don't know, maybe, maybe we don't need to specify, but that, that, that's the overall height, because I have noticed in the fence across the river, um, that it is a ten-foot fence, but it's actually higher in, in fact than that, because it's on these stilts, and I, I know we saw that with the, the picture, it was a little bit higher, I think, so that might be something to specify if it's not a given.
That eight foot, me, eight feet means.
Right, right.
Feet from the ground.
Yes.
Not eight feet from the.
Right, right.
Well, that's why I said if, if you base it off the height of the eve, then that's a, that's a constant.
And they're telling us that it is.
Yes, no, I got it. Yeah, I got it, so.
So eight feet it is.
And we had engineering, uh, be contingent upon city engineering, city engineer approval for drainage. And I think that is a, a, I think that's something that really needs to be, be looked at closely.
For sure.
Because it's now, as you saw in the picture, it's just grass, so it's just going to drain in there. And if, this is going to, I think, contribute to some neighbor, neighbor's drainage potentially unless they.
That the full list of, of, uh, required per, permits or approvals by other, other than us. Fire department, building department, city engineer, I think, assume those are two different things.
Yes.
And health.
Health department. Am I missing any?
Oh, did we talk about lights? Was that a condition?
We did talk about lighting, a, a condition that brings lighting back for administrative approval.
For the historic district, for the historic district.
Historic, yeah, the, yeah, again, the, the site plan that we have had the eight lights on the building, gas lights, and then six lights on the fence.
Right.
Electric, which are not on the site plan. So I would expect those to be, once we get that one that we put our signatures on, is included on there. You know, it would be in design with, this is electric, but then it would be similar with gas, right? Gas, uh, gas fired.
Well, that's, that's one extra question.
That'll be the one that's on the inside fence. The White, the White House?
Yes.
We have a clear understanding of those conditions, clear enough for you?
I have a, I have a list, and I also will have the recording, so I will put those together. I'll try to get them done by tomorrow. I have, I have other work to do as well. I have to read zoning.
It doesn't have to be done by tomorrow, so.
So I will try very hard to get that done by tomorrow. So I will try very hard to get that done by tomorrow.
So we, if that is the sense and extent of the motion. It requires a second and a vote.
I'll second.
Do we?
Can we read this?
Do we do a voice vote or a?
Can do a voice vote.
Okay.
Mr. Crawford has asked for it to be read back.
Oh, the list read back?
What, what, just the rudiments of.
Yeah, the sound control, inside allow ambient music, outside no amplified music, no. Outside speakers and no percussion, percussion. Occupancy to be posted, I have to be posted, I would want that posted inside the building. Um, contract with, for special events. Lighting in the outside seating area as shown on the drawings and on the photo. Drainage to be reviewed by the city engineer, fire department review and approval. Hours of operation, we said eleven, health department approval, and no outdoor live music.
Hours of operation or occupancy?
Occupancy, sorry.
And you said the special event, which got a permit, special event?
Special event contract between Wicks and the, um. Person holding the special event.
So would that be something that the applicant would create and that we would?
Then I would review it, just, I, the only thing I really want in it is the hours of occupancy and the, no, the music issues, the sound.
Probably want to put the, um, capacity as well, right?
Capacity, yep.
We have a motion. Second, or, uh, uh, seconded, we need discussion before we vote?
And if there's no further discussion, you can vote.
Is there, you guys want to discuss more?
The only thing I would add is, is, thank you, Commissioner Fox, um, is that, um, this has been a difficult, a, a very productive discussion, I, I've learned a lot about our zoning code and, and frankly, it's, it's, I think, made me a better commissioner, but it's also been important for me to hear from the neighbors. As well as the applicant, and, um. The fact that we have recorded records of these meetings has been extremely helpful for me personally to understand. What I thought would be best in terms of a planning, uh, position on this. And, um, yeah, I just, it's been grateful to be a part of this process and thank you for everybody's work.
I would also like. To thank. Cindy. And the commissioners, this is not. There are lots more, there aren't a lot of fun things we do as a planning commission, this is definitely not one of, you know, this is not, this is hard work and requires judgment and. And tact and whatever, I would also like to thank. Those of you out there, and I don't know if we got anybody on Zoom or not. But. For maintaining a sense of decorum and, and avoiding personal attacks and all the rest of it, which can make a difficult process, an un. Unbearable process, so thank you all for that. With that, why don't, does it, why would we not vote?
Reason, we can do a roll call.
Oh, I would prefer a roll call.
Gardner?
Yes.
Broker?
Yes.
Gaunt?
Yes.
Crawford?
Respectfully, uh, no.
And Fox?
Yes.
Motion carries, four.
Four one. That concludes. And closes the public hearing. And brings us to new business of which we have none, communications, none, rather, other than what was related to the application. Another opportunity for public comments, this time a limit of three minutes. Same drill, come to the podium, tell us who you are.
I'm Christine, four four nine Water Street. I know you keep quoting me on the twenty-five number, that was twenty-five for the inside, and then the outside was for the event space. Um, twenty-five people for the whole space, um, at one occupancy time. That's not, most wedding rehearsals are thirty. With, by the time they have their plus one and guests, so I'm sorry if I misspoke. I know that we've all been learning through this process, and I also learned through the process with going to the fire board and the building board and all of that. So just to be clear, when I said the twenty-five to thirty, that was inside, that wasn't counting the events. Would they're both be open at the same time? I can't first, I, I can't see that far in the future how that's going to logistically pair out. Uh, but I just want to be clear about that, so the twenty-five total for the whole thing is going to be difficult. So, thank you.
Anyone else? I will entertain, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, Jane.
Thank the commission for helping us, this is difficult, this pits neighbors against neighbors. And you don't want to be the bad guy, but you have to protect your own business, and this is very, very difficult. Sound is, we're in complete opposite, opposition of each other. Catherine and I sell sleep. Christine sells noise, so it's just very difficult, and thank you for taking us into consideration as well. We have businesses too, thank you.
Thanks, Jane.
Yes, and Simon, four two eight Butler Street, thank you very much, I know it was a difficult. Uh, decision to put everyone into consideration and the interest. I know that we all want to develop our businesses optimumally. But we also want to be able to keep our businesses the special thing they are too, thank you.
Thanks, Catherine.
No other comments? I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
I'll charge the time on this.